We're opening before the Selectmen's meeting for Monday, May 23rd, here at the COA. And as you can see in the picture, we have Selectmen Jones, Selectmen Tichico, myself, Jack Healy, Ellie Galls, our illustrious Highway Surveyor Chuck Macumber, and Jim Neuss. So, here we go. Anybody recording the meeting?
Free cam.
There you go. Alright, free cam. First thing on the agenda is to meet with Highway Surveyor Charles Macumber and Jim Neuss regarding the South Main Street and Locust Street bridges. And then, secondly, is to approve Chapter 90 project requests for Slade Bridge Road, South Main Street, and the final report for Richmond Road Bridge that's submitted by Charles Macumber, Highway Surveyor. So, it's all yours.
Good evening.
Good evening.
You know, we've been working on engineering both South Main Street and the Locust Street Bridge. South Main Street, good news, it's in way better shape than we originally thought. So, we should, there should be a great deal of savings there. The Locust Street Bridge, on the contrary, is way worse than we originally thought. Hopefully, the savings on the South Main Street will offset the added expense on the Locust Street Bridge, and we still should fall within the overall budget for the two projects. So, that's where we're at. I'll let Jim touch in on the details as far as where they stand with the engineering on both projects, and what he thinks the overall projects, the timeframes, you know, estimates on timeframes, and the impact it'll have on the neighborhoods. James?
As Chuck mentioned, on the South Main Street Bridge, we thought there was a scour problem, which would have been a great deal of effort from both engineering and construction. But when we went down there, there was no evidence of scour at all. And if there had been scour, we would have had to do a large hydraulic study to make sure that whatever material we put in the channel didn't affect the flood, you know, flows there, wouldn't restrict flows. So, going through the numbers, that probably is going to save us about $300,000 of work. It's now just going to be crowding along the waterline. Some of the stones there barely lose. Well, we went to the Locust Street Bridge, and Chuck and I, we were talking about it previously, that there was some evidence that some of the bridge decking was starting to rattle. And I mentioned to Chuck that we had a similar project in Framingham, where they actually took sonar readings of the bridge deck, and you can tell how much, pretty much how much concrete rot that was on there. And I believe Chuck sent you the report. Basically, this color is what, you know, is basically the whole story. Anything in red is the hotspots. It's pretty much, the deck is totally, all the way down through it is all rotted out. The yellow is starting to rot down to the rebar. We did a similar one. I was in Framingham, just so that you could see the results. You know, you can see the hotspots here on Framingham, and when they went to Millen overlay the deck, this is looking up. So, again, it's probably going to be the same thing, probably not as much in that big area as Locust Street, but when they remove that, the concrete's just going to come right up. And like I said, once it gets down to the rebar, and you can see this in the picture too, that this rebar is all rotted out, we actually had to do splicing across the rebar. This deck in Framingham, we didn't have to do the whole thing, but this is a much larger bridge. On Locust Street, it's a smaller bridge, but again, about forty percent of the bridge, forty-five percent is currently there, some concrete rotting. So, we looked at three options. One was just to do some isolated repairs. The second option was to just completely replace the bridge deck itself. And the third one was to replace the deck and the stringers, the iron beams going across it. And, you know, we came up with, if you just do partial repairs now, it may last you another ten years before you have to go and do the, do the bridge deck again, because whatever's in yellow is, it's still going to start to keep rotting. Second option was to just totally replace the bridge deck, just take it up and put down a brand-new bridge deck. The third option was the stringers. We didn't recommend it in the report, but we, I think the best option would be to replace the bridge deck, keep the, keep the iron stringers going across at where we paint those. Overall, that'll probably increase the cost there by about $170,000, but we anticipate saving about $300,000 on the South Main Street. So, there's still, once everything's all said and done, should be about savings of about $130,000 from what we originally estimated. Sorry. So, if we do get the go-ahead, South Main Street, we're pretty much done with the plans and the bidding documents. I recommended to Chuck, I think we should just lump both projects together, you'll get a better price on it. And the other plans, if you, if you do decide to go with any sort of deck work, probably take us two or three weeks to get those plans together. And looking a bit about mid-June, half a bit back, early July, and then construction start around August 1st.
Oh, yeah. Sorry, no, you go first.
The bridge itself, the Locust Street, probably take about three months. South Main Street's just crowding, so that's probably about two weeks worth of work. They do have to set up some water control in the river, but they'll do one side at a time, and then go to the other side. That should only take, honestly, about two or three weeks. So, it's the Locust Street one that would take the most time.
So, the bus, the busing for schools, Chuck, do you have an answer to that?
Sort of.
The same thing we did before?
Pretty much.
Okay.
Or, as I said, worst-case scenario, can we just put it on the back burner?
No, I don't think that's...
Till next year?
Well, that's not, that's not.
It'll be a full closure for that three months, or it'll be partial closures or?
It'll be a full closure, yeah.
Full closure for three months.
Which is good, that might...
Yeah. We, we talked about this before. We wanted to do the whole thing, all at one time anyway, so we're really right back where we started from. So, we, the board, previous board, wanted to do, wanted to make sure that the bridge was going to last, and we wanted to do the full boat repairs. But, anyway, that's where we're at right now. So, I'll make a motion to go with the full bridge repair.
Are you doing one RPS for both, both projects?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And so, one, one company will bid both projects, and can they run concurrent?
Yeah, they will.
If they're bigger, would it be the size of the company, or?
Most of that probably, it's probably going to be specialty, like the crowding would be done by one sub, you know, and probably the other bridge company, paintings and other specialties, so that would be a sub. The, the bridge deck itself would probably be the, whoever's the one who did it would do the bridge deck.
Okay. So, it's not too big of a project where they wouldn't, they'd have to run, do one, finish that, and do the other, and we'd be talking winter time?
No, not at the time.
Okay. I'll second that motion.
Okay, motion made. Just to clarify, you say the entire bridge?
The, the bridge decking.
The decking, not the, not the...
Yes, no, the bridge decking, yeah.
Option B.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed?
I would ask that, as soon as you get your construction schedule in, to notify the board, so we can notify the schools, because we'll probably have to go to the special town meeting in the fall and ask for the extra bus, again, like we did this year. I want to make sure we, it's a new bus company, too, so I want to make sure that we give them enough notice.
Yep.
On the South Main, is, there's not going to be any closure on South Main?
No, no, all that work, yeah, that, yeah, that wouldn't, there might be something temporarily during the day, but nothing permanent. I don't even anticipate that. I'd get a school in from underneath.
Okay, Chuck, you're still on, right? Chapter 90 projects?
Yep.
Thanks, Jim. Thank you so much.
We will start the normal business, I guess. Final report for the engineering on the Richmond Road Bridge. The total project was, we were approved for $138,220. We ended up spending $160,591.67. As you know, that project is ninety-nine percent done. We're just waiting for the landscape company to come back and finish reseeding a few areas. They've got some wetland seed mix that they got to put down. They've been waiting for the water to reseed. The area that they have to seed is right now underwater, so hopefully by the end of the week, that will be taken care of. So, we basically only spent the original contract by $22,371.67. That is the end of the engineering on Richmond Road Bridge.
Motion to approve for the Richmond Road Bridge for the final report.
Second. Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Give you all my stuff to do. The next thing is the, if you remember, Alton was interested in getting speed limits set for South Main Street. Last time there was a speed limit study done was in 1974, and South Main Street is dramatic, dramatically different than what it was in 1974. So, we're looking for $4,960 to have GPI conduct that speed limit survey, basically between the Breitman song mill and the Stockton shop warehouse. That should basically matter, just putting senses out and traffic counting. And we've been getting a lot of complaints from the residents and/or area businesses about people flying down that road. I don't really think this is going to do much, but at least it'll give the police department some teeth if they're going to write some tickets. Currently, the area is not posted. So, we're looking for $4,960.
Make a motion to approve the Chapter 90 request in the amount of $4960 for the traffic study for South Main Street.
Second. Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And thirdly, we got, we want a chip seal with twenty percent rubber asphalt, Slade Bridge Road, basically from the Historical Museum up to Bullock Road. Total project is, we're looking for $257,321.80. That will basically, the twenty percent rubber is the same process that we used on Bullock Road, from Chase Road to the Dartmouth Line, and we also used it on Route 79, on the Breckley Line to, down to Elm Street. It's held up well, and it's, I'm not saying it's cheap, but it's, compared to resurfacing the road, it's, you're looking at over a million dollars to fill that road. So, this will get us another, you know, seven, ten years off the road. And the road is, right now, a perfect candidate for, if we let it go any more, and it gets more deteriorated, you won't be able to use this process. Right now, the road is a perfect candidate.
How much can it?
Make a motion to approve the Chapter 90 project request for Slade Bridge Road in the amount of $257,321.80.
Second. Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Three for three.
Okay, and I think, Jim just gave us the name tonight. This is the agreement to, for the traffic study. I'm assuming we have to do a time council first, so they can see it and approve it and do whatever they're going to do to it, and then we can sign it next meeting or whatever. So, we've got time. So, might be a chance, you can sign all that crap, and I'll get it from Ellie tomorrow, Wednesday, and then we'll go from there.
Is there a study going on on South Main Street right now? Some kind of study? See, like acoustic microphone or something? Do you know the study?
I don't know. Don't know anything about it.
Okay. I'm just curious.
Today, since we're talking about Richmond Road and that area there, just so you guys know, there was a meeting on South Coast Rail, and Chuck was there, Police Department, Fire Department was there, Jack, myself, Paul from Town, who else from Town?
Kevin.
It's Matt from Water, and one of the water commissioners. And you know how we had talked about, we wanted a dead end, Forge Road. Well, finally, they had shown three options prior, but they have option four, which is no dead ends any longer. But, what it, what it entails is they're going to shift one small area of Richmond Road a little bit to take out the jog and give them more line of sight. So, that's, they have one more step. They have one other thing to do, and that's, as you go up Forge Road, past Richmond, they're going to do some more engineering because of the ten percent grade, and they'll be back this year. But at least we're not dead-ending or getting rid of any rock.
Especially if we're closing Locust Street Bridge for three months.
That is, that, you, you, we'll all be dead before that ever happens. I mean, they finally dropped the bomb about the speed limits today. That's the first time I've ever heard anybody from the railroad mention those speeds.
Well, yeah, this will be interesting for you guys. The speeds for the passenger service, which is probably, I think they said twelve years down the road, if that was happening.
At least ten, yeah.
Okay. Will be, they'll be coming through at seventy-nine miles an hour. The freight, which is going to be much sooner, will be at forty miles an hour. However, the tracks that, the work they're doing right now is to bring the tracks up according to the South Coast Rail to the seventy-nine mile an hour. But you're right, some of us old people may not be around when this thing happens. Alright, that's it.
Thanks, Chuck.
Have a good night.
You, too.
Get this one. Get this one. I do. Well, that's it.
The bottom line.
Today is the twenty-third, February 23rd.
You busy today?
A little bit, actually. My anniversary.
Happy anniversary.
So sorry.
Hope we'll be able to see the light at some point.
Yeah, you should be. Obviously, are we?
The Fire Department had interesting call today.
Yeah, I saw that.
Unbelievable.
Do we know how the driver is? No.
Saw the cab with the truck.
I...
He was struck, didn't he?
The driver was airlifted?
Yeah.
Airlifted?
Yeah.
I think he was alive.
That would be awful.
Time we have for the next six? Is there time?
No, it's not. There's no time. So, I just want to, you guys want to sign these now, or are we going to wait until later?
What?
You still do?
I think I just want...
No, you gotta sign some of it, too.
All right.
I don't know, there's a lot of paper, officials.
Okay.
No? So, in other words, if something goes wrong in it?
What?
It comes out of my allowance.
That's it. Comes out of your payphone.
Should only take fifty or sixty years for you to pay it off.
I know.
Just that one.
Just that one. Let's see. Here we go again. This is, this week coming, this weekend is Festival Week.
Oh, yeah.
Benny's Freakout for the, was it St. John Newman?
Yeah.
It says.
You gonna be flipping burgers?
Yeah, I'm going to be flipping, I just, I pulled my foot burgers again.
Hmm, what is that? I might have to go harass you.
Sad, it's, it's, it's sad, I think, it's a Sunday night. Six to, six to closing.
This one's overcooked, and this one's undercooked.
I couldn't eat a hamburger. Yeah.
Do they have veggies?
I'm going to watch you from the beginning to the end when you make me that hamburger.
Do they offer Garden Burger, Burgers, something for you to eat? A veggie?
Veggie Burgers?
A veggie burger, some kind of...
It's only bad if you say it downwind.
Toy Burger?
Turkey Burger.
Tofu Burger?
You have to be on the rocks, on the opposite side of the smoke. Alright, that should do it for now, I guess. I thought it was, did we tell the people what time it is?
Six o'clock.
Oh, six o'clock, so we should wait, huh?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Six o'clock.
I'm going to...
Do you have any business, or do you want to take a recess?
What?
Do you want a recess, or do you have business?
Yeah, let's recess for ten minutes. Alright, six o'clock, and we took a ten-minute recess. So, the next thing on our agenda is to meet with concerned citizens regarding XL recycler. Anybody who wants to come up? Citizens that want to come up and talk about this, come right up.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
How are you?
Good.
Do you have an extra copy of that?
Uh, it's, I believe it's a Princeton...
Temple University?
Temple University.
Shall we read this?
Yeah.
Okay. This is a letter from a town resident on High Street, Charles B. Sullivan, Armed Board of Selectmen, dated May 21st. He handed this to us tonight. "As you aware, the Board of Selectmen issued a license to operate a junk dealer's operation under Chapter 140, Section 84 of Massachusetts General Law on June 1st, 2015, for seventeen weeks' road. Subsequently, the state issued a permit to operate a metal shredder at the site on April 1st, 2016. As in the butter of this operation, I respectfully request that several restrictions be placed on the operation by the Board of Selectmen. Number one, the requirements and standards placed on XL by the Department of Environmental Protection represent the highest limit to the operation. In other words, the noise level presently established by DEP, parentheses, ten decibels above ground, background noise, closed parentheses, remains the maximum decibel level for XL shredding operation. Number two, the hours of operation be limited to 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Monday through Friday, with no work allowed on Saturday and Sunday. Number three, the metal or other recyclables not be allowed to pile higher than the eighteen-foot wall required by DEP. Number four, that the total noise level be limited to sixty decibels at the XL property line." I just want to ask a question. Isn't sixty decibels much higher than ten?
Right. Because that's, that would be the total noise. How the regulation is written, Paul, is it's ten decibels above background noise. So, my concern is that if you have a loud background noise, the shredder is ten decibels above that, it's not going to be very quiet. My, my concern is that the noise level be respectable. And sixty decibels is what I believe the town, Westport, allows at their operation on Charlotte, White Road, from what I understand.
Didn't DEP already say they can't go above forty-seven decibel?
Wow.
Ten. Ten above ambient. Ambience, they said, about forty-seven.
Right.
But ambient is not what, the way ambient was explained is not their operation. Ambient is, when there's nothing going on, that's ambient. That's why sixty is a heck of a lot higher than what they're, they're allowed to do.
They're only allowed to go to fifty-seven by, by DEP. You want more higher than what they're allowed to by DEP?
Well, okay, I didn't, I've never read that they have fifty-seven.
Well, they said it was forty-seven, and they got ten, ten decibels above ambient, so it would give them fifty-seven as a max.
Well, my, my concern is that they, they're running the shredder, and they have background noises, and, and that background noise being higher, you know, basically unrestricted.
So, are you, sorry, are you asking for the total noise level limitations to be stricter than what DEP has set forth as a guidance?
I, I, in the restrictions that DEP without the permit, I did not see...
Okay.
...a, a total decibel level.
Okay.
This would be a total decibel level.
Okay. So, in line with the DEP finding?
Right.
Okay.
Not to exceed sixty.
Okay.
Yeah, okay. You wouldn't mind if it was the fifty-seven that DEP was, is saying they can't be any over. So, we just put that fifty-seven?
Yep.
And at the property line, correct?
Right.
I believe that's the way DEP says now. It can't be more than ten decibels at the property line now.
Yeah, which is far less than, than fifty-seven or sixty.
Right.
Right. But that's only for the shredder part. That's the shredder's noise cannot be more than the, than ten decibels above the background.
Okay, well, the way I understand it, DEP says that the noise past their property line, anywhere outside their property line, can't, cannot exceed ten over the ambient noise, and the ambient noise isn't what the shredder makes. It's what you hear if nothing is going on, just if they're, they were shut down, and the traffic, you might hear some cars going. That's the ambient. That's the ten dBs over that ambient. That's, so that's on top of it all.
Without the shredder, right?
Well, like I said, I, I don't remember reading...
But I, I only get this because the explanation the other night.
What the, the document that was forwarded to me did not have a total sound level. It only had the fact that it was, the shredder was supposed to be no more than ten decibels above, and I, I remember it as a background noise. Ambient might, ambient background, like, you know, wasn't the same in a lot of ways, but...
Do you have a question, sir?
Yeah.
Can you just identify yourself?
Yeah, my name is Louis Campos. I'm from Sonnet, Eight Mile Street. Been in talk for ten years. One of the questions that I have, what's that threshold for environmental background noise? Exactly what that value is?
I don't know.
The, the, so we have a ten, what is it called, the D?
Decimal.
Decimal?
Yeah.
Thank you. What's that value for the neighborhood that we're talking about, for that company, outside of the company, when nothing is running, the plant is shut down? What's the value for the neighborhood? Do we have that?
Oh, it's the, the start-off value?
Exactly. What's the, what's that, what's that threshold?
I don't have that in front of me.
I don't have that, but they have, that was a low ninety number?
Right. It's an L, it's called an L nine.
L nine, yeah.
I think that...
Just, just to try to help you answer a little bit.
Identify yourself?
Sure, certainly. My name is John Marky. I'm an attorney who works with Mr. Costa and his son Jonathan, who run the business. The DEP required them to take sound testing for a full week, because obviously, in the middle of the day, when trucks are running along Seventy-Nine, the background noise... What's the value for the neighborhood?
Oh, it's the, the start off value?
Exactly, what's that, what's that, what's that threshold?
I don't have that in front of me.
I, I don't have that, but they had, that was a low ninety number?
Right, it's an L, it's called an L nine.
L nine, yeah.
Just, just to try to help you answer a little bit.
Identify yourself.
Sure, certainly. My name is John Marky, I'm an attorney who works with Mr. Costa and his son Jonathan, who run the business. The DEP required them to take sound testing for a full week, because obviously, in the middle of the day, when trucks are running along Seventy-Nine, the background noise is higher than it is at eleven o'clock at night when people are going to sleep. So, they took that whole day, basically, and they took what was, if you look at a day as a bell curve, they took it so that the, for ninety percent of the day, that becomes the baseline within which they can't go above. And so, that number at that time was in the high thirties, low forties. Now, obviously, as time develops, I know the select board may have other businesses that go in to the industrial park, that number over months and years can change, because traffic, as I think the prior group was saying, on South Main Street is different today than it was forty years ago. So, the, the requirement is based upon a test and being ten, ten, basically, decibels above that is all that you're allowed to do.
Right, so the question is, in that bell curve, there's a low end, there's a high end, and there's a, a negative side. Now, the question is, during those measurements, you have three points. How long was the measurement, measuring, measuring time? And how long did it take to take those samples? Are you taking it every hour, every two hours, every three hours? And how long did that take? So, there was.
It's constant.
It's constant. From the monitor setup, it, it, it doesn't shut off, it, it just stays. So, it ran for a week, just, just so that you know. The monitor ran for a week, monitoring the sound from the lowest, the quietest time to the loudest time, and it, and it took that data over five, six days.
Six days.
Six days.
So, and basically, your study is based on the six day period, twenty-four hours, so that's a total of, I don't know how many hours that is, and you would consider that as a valid, a valid study? That's the question for, for that period of time. And to generate a curve like this, because usually, curves like this in a technical world, you probably want to have a lot more samples, which you have the samples, but you don't have the time period, which is like in a week, like in a weekend, in, in a day, like a Sunday afternoon, that you drive by the area, it's quiet, you can't hear anything.
Well, the samples were inclusive of actually all the weekend days, so we made sure that we also, we've got a cross-section of the weekdays and also the weekends, so Sunday was actually included in that.
Quieter, but Sunday actually keeps, would be more restrictive. So, by having Sunday included in the six day or seven day period, meant that the average was lower, which meant that the requirement would be more restrictive.
Right, so, so basically, we're talking about an average value, and what I'm looking for is whatever that merit, value is for that week, for that period of time.
Right, and I think all of the data is available in the DEP report, but that number is, my understanding is between thirty-seven and forty is the baseline number that is the average.
So, thirty-seven DB to forty, let's say, and then the gentleman just kind of presented a ten or plus?
Correct.
So, that will bring you to about fifties.
Correct.
The highest point would be fifty, the lowest point would be?
Forty-seven.
Forty-seven.
Correct.
Okay, and today, you're running between, so, okay, so, basically, I was looking for an average, worst case.
And again, that's not the average, that was, it's called the L ninety, because you're basically, ninety percent of the time, you, you are below that, so we did not pick the fifty percentile, we picked the, basically, the tenth percentile, so, you know, ninety percent of the time, it's below that sound. And just for the, for record too, that was Mr. Costa and his son who helped me under, explain the technical matters, that's Marty Costa and Jonathan Costa.
I happen to answer any questions. Marty Costa, XL Recycling, I'll help you in any way.
I have a question. That study that was done?
Yes.
That was a required study by DEP?
Yes.
Correct.
And the method that the study used, was that dictated by DEP also?
Yeah, it's an industry standard, it's called, it's modeled in something that's called CADNA, so it's a, it's an industry standard for, for, for sound engineers. So, when the sound monitor is, is set up and it takes the ambient level, that is, is translated into a sound study. The sound study is modeled in a, in a engineering program called CADNA.
And just so that, for the record, in case anybody else does have a question, I mean, the, the Costas did have their sound engineer and their survey engineer available, and they had an open house last week where some neighbors did come to, but they could probably, if there was a specific concern of a person here, we could get the phone numbers for the people who can talk in more qualified expertise than a lawyer to talk about sound studies.
And that's another question.
Sure, go ahead.
My next question is, since you have those specs available, and it is specs from the DEP, can we have access to those specs that read through them?
They're in the plan.
They are in the plan, they're in the application.
And if, if you give us your email, we can have that email to you.
All right, all right. Can I have another?
You can ask as many questions as you want.
That's why you're here.
If Charlie can ask you.
All right. I went through this exercise on my own, but I kind of want to make sure I understand the whole manufacturing process of how you kind of deal with these materials. First one, I know that you have, your facility is all enclosed, right? Based on what I, I know. Can you give me stack configurations and specs for the facility? For example, you have a facility that's all enclosed, you're going to have, you have these toxins inside this facility. How do you kind of put the exhaust out to the environment? And if there is any specifications, can you share that with us? And if not, are you going to kind of take all these bad things out of the facility?
We are so far under the threshold, but I'll let him explain. Yeah, so the DEP has certain thresholds that they require for controls on processes such as this. The process was basically a limited plan approval, very similar to what you see in, in other industries of this type. They also have, they, they do a extensive permitting process to determine what is needed in the way of controls or any kind of stack controls at the end of their seven months, and, and as, as, as they've run all the figures, they determined that there was not any kind of stack controls necessary for, for the process. Hopefully, that answers your question.
So, there's no stack configurations, no stack requirements, no?
No.
For the stack of?
Correct.
Correct. All right, so now, you have, your material comes in in trucks, this is my second, can I keep asking? So, you have these materials that are coming into the, to this facility. You close the doors, the trucks dump the stuff in there, it goes to the shredder, the shredder kind of breaks everything down, right? It cuts all the, all the stuff, it has the belt, goes over to a pile, whatever the pile is. Now, during that whole process that I just explained, and please correct me if, if I'm wrong on this whole process, is there any time during that whole process that you're exposing external air in that, in that hole? From beginning, from when it leaves the truck, all the way when it piles up in small pieces after shredding? For example, you have doors open, if, if it's an enclosed system, if you have doors open, windows open, where is this air going to? Because now you have everything closed, the trucks are causing dust, all the stuff is up in the air, trucks are dumping, the belt is circulating around with this material that's cut into pieces, you got all this stuff, what do you do with that?
You want to show this? Yeah, no, sure, so, so ultimately, at the end of the day, if you go back through and read the, read the DEP report, the DEP report captures all, any kind of particular emissions, dust control, PM-ten, PM-two and a half, so I think it outlines all of that. If you go back and read, there's a lot of, there's a lot of controls in there that, that would, that manage that, both from BMP's best management practices, from the incoming inspection of the materials, right through the whole process. So, I think it's pretty much outlined, obviously, the same questions that you have are going to be the same things that basically the DEP addresses. That's basically what they do, it's a governing body for a, a, a facility like ours. So, I think if you go back and read through some of that, they addressed a, a lot of those, all of those, and, and, you know, they have a lot of experience permitting facilities like this, so certainly, over the course of eight months, you know, they made sure that, that what we were going to do was in line with what their regulations were, and, and at that point, certainly, you know, we're going to abide by that.
So, what is that, they, for yourself, like you, you read through those guidelines, can you tell me and explain to us in the general terms exactly how that whole process flows? So, I have a piece of metal, whatever size it is, the truck needs to remove that at the factory, out of, out of your facility. Is that going to be exposed to air? Is there going to be days that the air, the air can, the air quality is going to be less, from a quality perspective, lower, because the trucks now are hauling the stuff out? And, you know, it's?
Yeah, I mean, so, so to, to, I, I mean, I'll, I'll reiterate again that, that most of it was in the plan, but certainly, we had the engineers for a, an open house the other night, and I think that as, as much as we've got a great education and we certainly can answer the questions, you'd be, I'd be more than happy to put you in touch with them so that they can answer any kind of technical questions that you might have.
Yeah. I'll probably take some of the names from the engineering, from a technical perspective, from your team, and some of the names from the state, the DEP department that you're working with.
Sure.
I'd like to hear some of those names. I think, let me see, what else is there? Water system. So, your water system comes in, you have water coming in, it's going to kind of clean up stuff, or it's going to use, it's going to cool off things, whatever you're going to do with the water system. That water is going to go into a, what I, what I call is a disposal probably tank, then that tank goes into kind of the filtering system that's going to clean that water? Is that what's going to happen?
Yeah, so there's, if you look at the plan and you, you'll be able to see a, an engineered stormwater design for a zero discharge, so any water that's generated or any kind of stormwater would be zero discharge. That water would be filtered back through oil water separators, just as you spoke about, correct?
The residue from the water, that you, now you're cleaning up the water, the water goes into a clean tank, now you got it all that waste, what do you do with that waste?
Yeah, every, every quarter of BMP is to get somebody in there to, to, to come and, and clean out any kind of residual that falls to, to the bottom of the tanks.
All right. Do you use any chemicals to clean your machines?
Nothing.
No. All right.
Mr. Costa, I could just ask Mr. Costa one question.
Sure.
You're, you're going to have about between five and six thousand gallons a day of water usage. The water, after it's gone through the process, after it's cooled the machine and so forth, where is that, I mean, I understand goes through filters and so forth, but the, the final thing, is it evaporated into the atmosphere?
Correct, correct, so it goes in, ultimately, the water will be used back in, in, we're using the water in the process. So, any residual water, the stormwater filtration system will catch, so there's certainly, there'll, there'll be no discharge. We'll use the water that we're, we're not going to pump any more water in than we have to, it's calculated based on exactly to, to a science, so that, that there's not an excess amount of water that's pumped into the process.
So, you're, what you're saying is you, you would recycle the water also?
Would we use it, correct, correct.
So, the ten gallons a minute to?
Would be probably recycled.
Right, it's not a, a constant flow of ten gallons?
Correct.
It's, it's just a flow through the system.
It's a flow through the system.
It's not necessarily a flow from the main.
Right, correct.
The only time the town water would kick in, Mr. Solomon, just, just so for information, would be if, if, if I lost that, that ten gallon pressure, and then the town would supplement it, the town water would supplement that. Otherwise, it hopefully is completely self-contained, and as, as an elaborate system, I, I mean, it's a, it's a well-engineered system that captures all of the rainwater off the site, not a drop leaves even in a hundred year rain event, and it goes through a series of weirs, and then it, it gets down to where the shredder process is, and then we, we just tap right into that. At that point, it's clean, and we just tap right into that and reuse it back into the shredder again. So, it's, it's hopefully as close the system as we can possibly make it.
So, the only thing that'll leave is evaporation?
Evaporation, right.
Do these gentlemen want a tour?
Absolutely.
There was a tour one day last, it was Thursday or something, but, I mean, make arrangements, you go up there, take a look at exactly what they're doing.
Yeah, one other question since the tour, because I was going to ask that question. I'd like to see and request a tour of an operation, of an operation type of site. I know you guys have two other sites, one in Charleston, one in Westport. And a full operation, probably midday, whenever you think it's the right time for us to kind of walk through and see how these machines work. This is, would be more for an operational type, type of understanding, and?
I think one, one piece you should know, I think, this is unique. The technology that, that the Costas are using in this project is not in use at either of the other sites.
Understood.
And they, and so therefore, I don't know how useful it would be for you, and also, this is the only one in New England that is entirely enclosed, so they can't go and bother another company and say, we want to show you how it is, so. So, I don't think, I don't think that that would be?
I come from the manufacturing industry, and I know how these guys operate, so, just a little bit of background on me. The process in which you do anything in life, specifically with manufacturing, does not change. Regardless of you using a two-hundred-fifty-thousand-dollar car versus a Toyota Camry or a Toyota?
Corolla.
Corolla, the process of driving does not change. The only thing that will change is as you go through the life cycle of a machine, you keep making improvements and improvements and improvements. And that's basically what we're doing here, right? We have two facilities, you have lots of experience with this technology, you have lots of experience with manufacturing, cutting metal, types of machines are good, types of machines are not that great, you want to pick some good machines, and you know you have the experience. So, what I want to see is the baseline what you have today in your process versus what we're going to end up having here. And the assessment is for us to look at that. Not that, I want to say, you know, yeah, today, this machine is broken, it's not doing a good of a job as you spec it here, that's not the purpose. The purpose is to understand the process, understand how you cut material, understand how you move stuff in the factory, understand how people are working through the whole process, because that's what makes things, from a project perspective, that's what makes things successful or not successful.
True, but the process that we, that we're installing here, we don't have it at any of the other sites, so.
So, so that's another thing, so that means if you don't have a process in this new site, that's another thing that we need to look at, because now you're putting a new machine in a factory and you don't have a solid process, because now you're not using the same process, it's not a continuous process, you're breaking that process and you're saying, we're going to use a brand new machine, a brand new, and a brand new way of doing things.
Well, with all respect, sir, when we went from giving people a ride on a horse to giving a person a ride on a car, we didn't say, you have to go show us how you ride your horse. This is a different type of machine, and it is enclosed in a way that is not existing. This is the cutting edge of doing things. So, yes, there is in everybody, and these people taking a loan to build this, and in the town saying, we want to encourage business in town, everybody is making some progress, and everybody has to operate on some faith. If you choose to just say, we only do it the old-fashioned way, we have old junkyards that do not allow us to process things in, in a more modern and in a cleaner way, and if you looked at the junkyards in town, you don't have people putting in these kind of hundreds of thousands of dollars of water capture systems. All of these are investments that are the best technology, that they have to rely upon engineers as well. So, I, I, I don't want to take you to a, a place that looks very different, because it's not going to be very helpful to you or anybody else. That's just my view.
Understood, and I totally understand that. There's two aspects, the way I see it from an engineering perspective. One, you have the new process, like I was saying, you've got to train people, you have to educate people on auto-bungling those machines, and that's something that's totally new from your, from your, it's an additional thing that you have to do. And we should be able to understand that. The other piece, talking about the air quality, I think we should monitor the air quality around the facility. Do we have, we have technologies today that should be able to monitor the air quality on the facility, on the neighborhood, in town.
So, you, you, you will provide a baseline?
So, the baseline would be, we'd have to do a fully study on the quality of the air in the area before and after, like we did for sound, and then if that, that is already available, it's great. If the dead is not available, fine too. But I think we have to baseline things as we go through this new, new, because this is a new state-of-the-art facility, we want to make sure we baseline everything the proper way, from a technical perspective.
Did DEP request?
The permit, the permit is actually an air quality permit.
That's an air quality permit.
So, they did all the testing, part of that is, is they do ask for the sound piece, but it's an air quality permit.
So, the air quality part of the?
Do you live, do you live close by that you could do an air quality on your property? How close are you to the facility?
Uh, I, I'm probably, I don't know where the facility is, but I know it's?
So, so you're not a neighbor?
I'm in Sonnet.
No, but, so you're not, you don't know where the facility is?
No, Mill Street.
Can I, can I speak for a minute?
Wait.
Sorry, I didn't mean to take you...
Okay, no, that's fine, no, I just, I feel like you're fighting the fight alone and I, I have some things...
Well, you live on Mill Street, whereabouts on Mill Street?
Eight minutes. Right at the bottom.
Okay.
Right, right in town.
Right by, you know where your fire station is?
Right there.
A sort of...
Right where the fork is.
You know when you...
Yeah, right.
If you, if you walk there and bear left, Mill Street, right there, that's where he lives.
Okay.
Like, so you, you don't even know where this facility is?
Well, I know the street, but I don't know exactly the location.
You wanna go up there and take a look?
I will.
And go up there and have them give you a...
You know, you know how I got this information, I don't wanna distract the, the meeting? I got this by a neighbor that told me that their neighbor got this letter from the company saying they were gonna come into town. Nobody knew about it.
This has been going on for over a year. So I don't know...
Something, something in the, well, that's a whole sort of discussion that, that I don't, I don't wanna even distract it.
It isn't a different discussion.
Well, it's not...
Because if you listen to the board of selectors meetings, watch the meetings on TV, then you would know about this. This, this stuff went on a year, but there's nothing, nothing's being hid here. This is, everything is done in, on the public record.
Understood.
So, I mean, the fact that you didn't know about it, I'm, I'm sorry, but, I mean, you should at least go up and take a look and see what they're doing up there.
Understood.
You know?
You got a point, you got a valid point.
And so the board knows, Mr. Campos came in today, always spoke for quite some time, I gave him the information I already had. Gave him a copy of the permit and everything. And he went off to study that and then probably contacted DEP.
Yes, I did. I did.
So he's, he's doing his homework.
Doing my homework, yeah.
Absolutely.
Exactly. And, and the thing is, it's not, I mean, we have ways, technologies of making things public. And maybe I missed the boat, it doesn't matter. Today, we are here.
Yes.
And I have a concern.
No, you want to say? Do you name please for the record?
My name is Ellen Lima, I live at forty-one High Street. Charlie Sullivan thankfully came over and spoke to us. And Mike is my neigh, next-door neighbor. Things that happen on Copacabana Road directly impact us. And although we are not abutters, we are across the street. So sound and smells and things do not end over the road. And your point, Mr. Lawyer, we have had many, many companies try to come into town because we didn't have zoning forever. And they tried to put in all kinds of things that would have been quality of life issues for the town of Freetown. In fact, they were going to put the huge dump that's in Fall River, right behind where the bank and the post office is brought. And told us there would be no problems, there would be no smells, there would be no vermin, there would be... And I mean, you just drive through that area and you know what that is. You'll smell it at your site, guaranteed. So we don't take things lightly in this town. And I really feel like, you know, this, Mr. Campos' points are well-taken. When you tour a place, you will get to know exactly what the, what the materials are being and how they're being processed. And sure, maybe in this site it's gonna be enclosed, but there'll still be issues that you can see for yourself that may bring up questions, more questions. So I, I don't appreciate the tone of your voice when you, when you speak to us in that way. We have a lovely area where we live. As it is now, the noise pollution from the highway is phenomenal, especially at certain times of the day. If DE, if the DEP did their noise study at that time, oh my God, we are in trouble. I mean, that traffic wakes me up at quarter to five in the morning usually, that's going into Boston. It's just horrendous volume of noise. So, and I mean, there's the grinder, whatever that place is over there. You know, the one that grinds up the rocks off of Ridge Hill Road there? That's amazing amounts of noise. Thank God it doesn't go all the time. But I mean, there are industries that are impacting the quality of our life right there on High Street. So this isn't being taken lightly, it really isn't.
I didn't mean to take it lightly, I mean, that's why they had an open house last week and invited neighbors. And I just wanted to tell, Mr. Campos did know something about air quality, I just was asking him to, you know, if he had data, we would, we'd, I would've been happy to hear it. But I understand that he's interested and today's his first day of asking the questions and he's asked a lot of good questions. We're gonna get him contacted to the people who are tech, have the technical ability to answer them. And if I, if my tone wasn't respectful, I apologize, I didn't intend anything.
And I was just curious, who was that invited to the open house?
All of the abutting neighbors. All of the abutting...
Across the street, it's not abutting.
Well, I mean, we did go, I think we went to the assessors' office and we got his, we got a radius map and we asked her for all of the abutting properties. So it was ever, whatever she, whatever she provided for abutting properties when, when, when we sent that, when we sent it out. And, and I'll just say, I mean, certainly, we, we, I, I value your concern and, and when we went into this, we went into this with the, with the goal of making sure that we fit into the neighborhood as best as possible. We certainly don't want to be any kind of problem for you folks, that's where you live, we understand that. And I think if, if you guys take the time to come out and, and look at the site and maybe spend some time with us to get a little bit more detail, you'll find that we really did go through a lot of pains to make sure that all of those issues were addressed. Certainly, nothing's perfect, but we, we think that we put a good plan together with a lot of time, a lot of effort, and a lot of engineering went into, to address the issues that, that you brought up. So certainly, the doors will always open, you know, we'd be more than happy to explain. And, and, and just know that, that we're aware of, 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 of the neighborhood and, and the impact.
Well, I think you have, you know, the neighborhood is not necessarily the abutters. I mean, just thinking about who abuts that property. It's the railroad, the state forest, you know, there's very few abutters that are, that are homeowners, you know? So, I mean, but there are a lot of homeowners in the area.
I think we sent out thirty-five, I, I, you know, I mean, and that would obviously encompass the three or four industrial neighbors and then all of Alexandria. And then I, I believe, I mean, I didn't look at the addresses that closely, but I believe quite a few people on High Street also received the letters.
So is there not a tour planned?
He's across the street, he didn't get it yet.
That was a true, we had, last, Mr. Campos, and all due respect, last week we had an open house, last Thursday night. The thirty-five letters that went out were letters that were inviting everybody to come in, ask you questions. We had our, we had our engineers there, we had our site and engineers there. We had our environmental engineer, the guy who worked closely with us and DEP. It's a very comprehensive, I mean, you have the permit, it's very comprehensive. It took seven-plus months to put it together, taking, hopefully leaving no, no stone unturned. The DEP felt very, very confident about what they issued us for permit regulating the process. I will say my apologies to the folks that are here that did not receive an invitation. But the only thing I can do right now is extend that invitation to those of you who did not receive a letter. And you're welcome to come up, talk to us, look around, see what, what it is we're doing. We're happy, that, that, we wanna be as transparent as we can with the community because we need to live within the community. We understand that the community, there's been nothing out on Ridge Hill Road that has impacted the community. As Ridge Hill Road and the industrial park evolve, there were gonna be probably many things that impact the community. And I don't mean, I don't mean negatively, I just mean, it's going to change up there, just as the analogy about how South Main is not the same road as it was. It's gonna change. We happen to be the first folks up there. I, I, I want, I want everybody to feel confident that, you know, I mean, we gave it a whole lot of thought before we, we started anything here. And, and again, not because we're great guys, because we were mandated to do so by the state. So I feel very, very confident that the permit, that the state, the air quality permit, air quality meaning noise, emissions, that's anything to do with air. We believe that they nailed it. And I know that because I worked, I worked on that thing for every I dotted and every T crossed, closely with them, with our engineers. You know, studies were, were done in many, many, many areas, not just sound and emission, just many, many, many areas to look at what the impact was gonna be. Stormwater, for example. You know, how do we capture stormwater and utilize that so that we're not, you know, we're not just turning the faucet on and, and using tons and tons of water in our process? So things like that were given consideration.
And let me just, let me just interrupt for a moment. There are four folks here, if we get all their email addresses, we'll get them the full DEP permit and we'll get them the contact information for the technical people who can answer more engineering questions if you have them. Rather than, you know, and then if they wanna come up to visit, they can come up to visit, 'cause there are a couple of site plans that they have on poster boards that you could look at to see exactly where, how does the machine lay out on the ground and you'd be able to walk the ground to see that as well. I think that that would be the best way to get your questions answered, 'cause you'd have something in writing to review, you'd be able to talk to the technical experts and you'd be able to walk the property. And I think that's the, that probably would be the best way for you to put the whole story together so that you could understand it in a way that, you know, you obviously have a mechanical or an engineering background, Mr. Campos, and you'd probably understand it better than I can, so I think that might be worthwhile. If I, may I just, when I, my, my problem with the process, I think to the Costas, is that probably we are a year later. We're talking a year late, that's really what the problem, and we can talk about hindsight, that's, that's beside the point. I wanna say, I heard, heard this through rumors back in maybe January or February. Okay, what was coming on? Having lived there for sixty years, I've seen, like I said, I've seen proposals come in, I've seen them go, okay? I wasn't gonna get overly concerned about something that I have no control over. When I contacted the town, when I heard what was, when I actually saw the construction start to be, to come to volition. I went, I got the DEP permit. Basically, I'm gonna say, I'm satisfied with most of the things, okay? The four things that I have addressed in this letter are the four things that I still have concerns over, okay? I, I personally, I don't have, I, I relish the thought that, that the shredder is going to be in an enclosed building, okay? I relish the thought that there's a sound barrier, okay? Put my mind to ease tremendously, but I still have a few things and that's why I addressed the board. And that's why I've asked them to add these things, add the stipulation to your license. That's my, my point of view, okay?
I appreciate it, thank you.
We appreciate everyone's concern and we're here, it's, it's transparent. You're, you're, come up, we'll answer whatever questions we can. And if we don't have the answers, we'll certainly bring the experts in that helped us to get to where we are, to answer them for you.
Quick question to the chair. Your hours of operation, what are you currently asking for hours of operation?
We're proposing the hours of operation for the actual process to run from Monday through Friday from seven to five and on Saturday from seven to two. That'll be actually run hours. We do propose maintenance on the second shift. There will be maintenance, general maintenance on, on, on the equipment on the second shift.
But it will not be running?
Not, not running.
Not running.
Not the ham, it's not the law?
Nah, that's correct.
Correct.
Basically, those hours are scale hours when we have the gate open and, you know, we'll have...
Those are processing hours, not the process outside those hours.
Correct, correct.
Seven to five?
Yes.
Monday through Friday?
Yeah.
And what about Saturday again?
Seven to two.
Now, Mr. Chair, currently I believe there, there is a MRF that's up, that was a permit up there, the...
Allied Republic.
Allied Republic, correct. I believe their operations are seven to seven, Monday through Friday. And I'm not sure what their Saturday operating hours were that was on their permit. I believe it was seven noon, but I'm not proud of that. We can look into that also. So seven to five would be within those hours that is also permitted for Allied Republic.
Mr. Chairman, if I may. I don't think that the eight to four hours are unreasonable. I would say that this, well, this morning, before seven o'clock, they are working on the construction of the facility. And the noise level this morning was, was, I would rate as disturbing. Now, I know that none of the noise provisions, none of the barriers or anything are up. I have a, I definitely have a problem with them opening the facility, we'll say, unloading a dump truck, you know, an eighteen-wheel dump truck full of assorted, assorted metal on their scale at seven o'clock in the morning. Whether they open the facility for their employees at seven o'clock, but I think to start to do business moving metal at such an early hour. And I think on Saturday, at two o'clock is definitely later than I would like to see.
Okay, you, in your request, it was, it was Monday through Friday, you haven't, anything on Saturday?
Do you want them to work on Saturday?
Well, I'd rather that they not, I, I definitely...
But what about the other company that's gonna be in there, Allied Republic?
Well, my understanding of Allied Republic is that every, even the unloading would be, if it ever comes to volition, would be enclosed, where this is gonna be, I assume, in the open, 'cause of the area, they don't have that much land to...
Does the board wanna ask you any other questions here?
How long are you in full operation?
Hopefully, right now, we're waiting for Eversource, it's really kind of contingent upon Eversource bringing in the upgrade. We can be fully constructed, but if we don't have the actual upgrade for the power. And we were hopeful that that would be at some point in the middle of July. But with the Verizon strike and some poles that have to be moved that are owned by Verizon, your guess is really as good as mine as to how quickly they get out there to move those poles and relocate them. So at this point, it's really, if the strike, I, I'm not sure how the strike will proceed and how quickly they'll be able to get out there to actually give us power at this point.
Okay, that was a roundabout, not an answer.
If, if the...
So you're looking at somewhere between July and early August?
Correct.
Okay.
At the earliest.
At the earliest.
Yeah.
I have a question on what's going on now. I mean, you're building the facility now.
Correct.
We went up there last Tuesday and we saw it. But what time are you guys starting in the morning?
Seven, seven o'clock, I mean, I, I don't know what would be, was going on before, before seven. But seven o'clock is, is when, when, when they start.
So if one of the subcontractors came at six forty-five today, I mean, you might not know that.
Right, right.
But it...
So we can, we can assure that no, no activity starts there before seven o'clock in the morning, every day?
It's your business to know. Not know, I don't know, I'll check into it, it's your business to know. This is just setting off the ground, the groundwork right here. And now we, we already know that you've already started before seven, so, you know...
We do.
Okay.
We do?
What?
I don't know that.
Okay, we have a gentleman here who's a neighbor who said that they did start before seven.
I was there at six thirty this morning, I don't, I don't, I...
Well, see, well, here's, here's the thing, I'm gonna listen to the neighbors right now because they're here and they, they just wanna, they wanna voice their concerns, right? And, and you are so open that you wanna hear their concerns as well. So they have a concern that possibly, more than likely, in his eyes, that somebody started before seven. So you really wanna make sure that this is just the construction phase. We don't wanna get it to the actual processing phase that you're gonna be doing the same thing. So, I mean, this is just early, you know?
Sure, sure.
Understood.
Would you be minimal to eight AM start time in the morning for your, for your scales instead of seven?
I mean, typically, the business is, is some, some, it runs typically like a landscape, a construction business, construction schedule.
With the concerns of the neighbors and our extra hour...
Something we could, we could think of, we could, we consider everything. I mean, you know, I mean...
The other, the other cool point he has, and I'm just asking just to see, the eighteen-foot-high piles. Did you have any height requirements or stipulations on, I mean, obviously you can't have collapse dangers and that, that type of thing, I know on...
Right, right, so, so the, the piles ultimately, we hope not to have... Right, right. So, so the, the piles ultimately, we hope not to have many piles at all. I'll say that, but of course, that's in a, in a perfect world and, and the piles, they really don't, they don't really have much sound once they're in a pile, so I, I don't know, you know, certainly, this is the first time we've seen this, so we, we definitely take a, take a look at everything and, and try to, try to consider.
Do you normally have thirty-foot piles of, of scrap?
Yes, yes, we do.
Do you have the facility, the room on your facility to level those piles to keep them below a certain, certain height?
On this particular facility, I think it would be probably difficult to, to, you know, we don't have that much space. So, it doesn't, you know, it's not in our intention to have many piles at all at this point.
You want to process it and get it out as fast as possible, I understand.
Correct.
What's the process that you load that, your trucks to halt it up? You get a loader in there and then load it into the truck, is that how it works? Or you have the truck backing up into the facility, in enclosed facility, and it just gets material inside of the, in?
So, the, the loading of the trucks for the outgoing material will be within the sound barrier?
Within the sound barrier. It doesn't mean that's inside of the building, in enclosed?
No, it's not inside of the building.
So, it's outside?
Correct.
And how, do we know how much dust that all movement material causes in here?
I, yeah, I mean, I think we do, so I mean, obviously, when the DEP looked at the facility, they look at the whole operation. They don't look at just one piece of the operation. So, I think if you went back and you, and you looked at the plan, I think that they, they, they touched on all of those, all of those issues. It was not just, it was not just the act, one process or another process. It's the whole facility as a whole that is, that, that gets permitted.
But you understand my question, my concern, right? Because my concern is trucks move, the air quality is going to, specifically with metal. I, I can breathe smoke from a cargo in on the road, but if I have a truck coming in all day, back and forth, halting the stuff and the loader moving this material, the particles that generates out of metal is going to be what?
Is calculated.
Calculated.
Is, is calculated in the, in the air permit. So, obviously, they weren't going to permit the facility without taking into consideration everything.
Exactly, so, and those numbers, those numbers are in some sort of the permit, you said?
Yes.
They're in the air.
Okay.
And there's water, there's a spray system that's required to keep that kind of particulate from getting abroad.
Yeah, I think if you, if you go back and read through, you'll find a lot of best management practices that outline that without getting into too much detail, I think that that's covered.
Yeah, I'm looking for more detail, but I will read through in more detail and I'll, I'll get some more questions for you via email.
Again, Mr. Campos also, the permit and contact information for the Bureau of Treatment at DEP.
Yep, thank you.
Do you have any questions, sir?
No, I don't. I'm like Mr. Campos, I'm late to the party, my own fault, I guess, but I didn't realize this was, this was happening in town.
Oh.
I just found out.
I just want to make sure the record that we point out that this facility is an industrial area.
Yes, I understand that, yeah. I lived on Forty-Five High Street, man, it's Michael Garcia, I've lived there for thirty years. I began the, the fight with Ravenbrook landfill site thirty years ago and quite everything since then. And so, this is a recurring theme in this area, that some polluting agency wants, wants to come in inevitably and incessantly.
There are many, many things and it's, it's disheartening to get this far and then find out what it really is. My fault too, I take blame on, you know, not knowing, but, you know, I pride myself with being involved in many, many towns in sixty-five years here and I am blown over by this, I really am, not knowing and trying to help and facilitate part of the process. I really am.
Have you been at that area? There's a lot of other businesses up on Richelieu.
We walk there. We walk on Richelieu Road all the time with our husky. We walk there all year round because it's a great place to walk, there's not a lot of traffic, especially off-hours, evenings, weekends, you know? She loves to swim in that whatever mucky yucky walking water up there, you know? My son is the ranger for the state for, in Freetown this year, that's his, he works for DCI, he's a park ranger, you know? I mean, we are so invested in this property, in, in the, in this part of the town and, you know, coming down the street, coming here right now, there's beautiful wild turkey there, there's deer every day, there's great horned dogs. We may be near an industrial site, but we don't feel like that. Do you know what I mean? We have great quality of life there on High Street and this is unnerving, it really is.
So, one of the things that, since we, I kind of missed the bow on kind of getting the information for here, so I did miss that. So, the gentleman's been here for thirty years, you've been here for thirty or twenty?
No, my whole life.
My whole life. So, there's a comment here that we don't find some of these things out, but I did read something on this blueprint here. There was a gentleman that, Mr. Barbado says that he thinks this is a good business to go in this area. However, we can stop this in a court of saying whatever it is. When was this gentleman involved in the process? Was it the beginning of the process, at the end of the process, of qualifying this company to come into town?
Do you know who the gentleman is?
No, I do not.
He's the building inspector, he's our building commissioner.
So...
And when the company went to him, went to him about a permit under the provisions of our bylaw, under the scrap positions of our bylaw, all right? That was referred to the board of selectmen because we issued a license for scrap dealers.
Okay.
All right. The board of selectmen acted in June, June first of last year. Two of the members of the board voted to issue the permit and one of the members is no longer selecting, chose not to run.
And what's his name again, the, the one that just?
You don't know?
No.
Mr. Baumgartner.
Well, can you spell that for me?
Mr. Baumgartner, Mr. Sadik voted in favor of the junk dealers license. I voted against it.
Okay, and your name is?
Lisa Pacico.
Lisa Pacico, okay, thank you.
So, we, we issued the permit and if you go back and look at the video, we, it was a long discussion and it's all on video, that we were not going to tolerate the noise and so forth that would disturb the neighbors.
Okay.
All right? That's, and we issued that permit every year. The company had to go to DEP to get a permit to operate that business here in town. And my understanding is in April, April first, I think that permit was issued. Now, certainly, the company hasn't started operating, so we don't know if they're going to disturb the neighbors or not.
Exactly.
We do know that they have some pretty stringent requirements that are placed on them by DEP, who is the controlling factor if they step out of line. But the board of selectmen also controls them because we issue a permit, we have to renew their permit every year on the, because they're, they're a scrap deal. So, you know, in, in, in the end of, what is it? It is, it runs on, it runs on an annual basis. So, in December, if they're operating, and, and they know this because it was explained to them and it's on the video, that if they're causing a problem here, they're not going to get a permit, plain and simple. We had a similar thing three or four years ago on another facility here in town that the people were up in arms of hope, all right? And finally, they got their permit to operate and they still operate and they're really not a problem because they know that they're not going to get their permits renewed. So, listen, I, I haven't been in town as long as...
My claim to fame.
My friend Charlie that, that grew up here, but I've been there only forty-two years. But I happen to live on the east side of town, not in the capital like you guys do. But the thing is that, you know, we don't want anything to harm the neighbors. We don't want anything to, to track from the town of Freetown. This is a place that my kids grew up in and I plant on being here until they plant me. So, you know, we're going to protect your interests. So far, I haven't seen anything from the people that represent XL that indicate to me that they're not going to abide by what you're saying. But we hold, we hold the final card here. We don't have to issue the permit if it's screwing up. That's where I come from.
Understood. And, and I do agree with your statement that they're not fully operational yet.
No.
And this is why I would want to be taking a look at their facilities, doing an operation. Westport facility, if there is one, or?
Let me tell you about the Westport facility. I know, your facility's on Charlotte White Road. Sixty-eight Charlotte White Road is diagonally across from your facility.
Right.
My parents lived there for years. Charlie knows the place. And there was never any issues. We lived right across the street. My parents lived right across the street. There was never any issues. Now, I know you're, it's not the same operation. So, I'm just thinking that you guys need to stick with what you're saying to us and hear the people in town that have very legitimate concerns. That's the way I look at it.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just say one thing again?
Why do you call me Mr. Chairman?
Because you're supposed to, you're supposed to. Well, well, Robert's rule of order.
Oh, okay. Leave me out of this.
You know where they were, they were written?
Where what was?
Where Robert's rules of order was written?
Was it written by a general or something?
No, exactly, the city of New Bedford.
Were they?
Yes, by a man who got flustered by the, I believe it was the means of the Baptist church.
Oh, okay. Wasn't he a general or something?
But anyways, my, my request is basically to put the restrictions I have here or as close as we can to the license, just so everyone has a baseline in, in case there is something that goes wrong. And I, I would speak to the costers' operation. I, I checked with the town of Westport. I checked with the town of Charlton. Town of Westport, the building inspector was not as friendly as the, apparently, the Charlton building inspector's office was. In Charlton, the woman did not even know where, was not familiar with the company. So, that, that speaks to your operation there, okay? And she, she had, she knew the area, but she did not know. Oh, town of Westport, there was an issue that we can't control. We hold much on. But, so, so that's my concern. And like I said, I was, I, I, yes, I would rather that you not be there. Okay, yeah, let's say, that, that's a fact, okay? I might, but the thing is, with, with that being all said, I, I believe the DEP permit answers most questions. These were just some, something that I think answers a couple of questions that I had that DEP doesn't. One of my, my, my big concerns, my two big concerns is that some, they can't, no matter how good their intentions are, they can't go to the DEP standards, so they pursue through means to lower those standards. I don't want that to happen. I, I want them to have to go by the standards. They can't do the standards that they have now, they say they can now, and they got to go. That, that's my, my, that's the concern basically was number one. I, I want to make sure that there's not so much noise in the background that, or that the shredder becomes like, not even in an issue, it's, it's the noise in the background. I, I, I don't really want to see big piles of metal, okay? Eighteen feet, that's the, the top of their wall, that would be basically, you know, reasonable standing. And I, not, not only am I have a little bit of issues with the seven to five in the Saturday, but in the, in the minutes of your meeting on June first, it was alluded to the fact that the, the machine goes down or the operation goes down for a period of hours. We want to be able to catch up. I don't think that we as neighbors should have to withstand their catching up, okay?
I agree a hundred percent.
You know, if, if there's a power failure, they're out for three hours, we have to suffer through the power failure also. They have to suffer through the power failure. I, I don't think, I don't, it was alluded to the, the fact that, oh, we should be able to catch up. And I can see maybe their argument there, but I, I have to look at, at my point of view. That's, that's why I asked to address the board.
Listen, for anybody here, we culled out the portion of that meeting that has to do with XL, so you don't have to watch the whole thing. It's culled out of, one of the employees pulled it out, it's available, that if you bring a stick in, I'm sure we can give you a copy of it and it's a MP, MP three file, you can watch it if there's any questions as far as how we, we dealt with it. But certainly, the board of selectmen has all the right in the world to make any decision they want on this license. The license is valid right now through December thirty-first. And certainly, in my opinion, XL knows that, what the parameters are and I think if I was in the issue, I'd make sure I kept the neighbors happy. That's, that's just me talking. I'll turn it over to the rest of the board.
Thanks. Monica?
Sure.
I voted against it, not because I voted against you, XL, I voted against there not being any restrictions put on the license in the beginning. You knew that I was aggravated over the hours. You knew that I was aggravated over, that I wanted more restrictions put on you, you know, access to go by it without notice, things like that, just to make sure that things were taken care of. So, I don't have any druthers of putting restrictions on. I would, no, I voted for that before. I wanted it before. I believe it's necessary. I believe that to be a good neighbor, a good business neighbor and a good neighbor, that, that shows like a, a sort of a commitment on both parts, right? You can, you know, as a good neighbor on my side, you can work here and as, and you would listen to the neighbors and, and their concerns. So, I mean, it just keeps a better check and balance, that's how I look at it. Without restrictions, doesn't mean that you're not here to do good business, it just means that you have something to adhere to and that this board, should you not adhere to it, have more of a basis to pull away your license. So, I don't have any, I would rather see restrictions placed on your permit or your license at this point. But that's, that's, that side of me. The other side of me is I would have to check with town council to find out if right now we can put restrictions on the license, since it's already been given to you and since it doesn't come up for renewal until December. So, I would have to find that out from council.
So, Lisa, you don't know if there's like caveats that are in place that?
There are none.
Okay.
DEP, the reason why they went to DEP, and I asked this question the other night. The town has not put any restrictions on them at all. Their restrictions, restrictions come from DEP because they, DEP gave them the permit. So, we didn't put any additional restrictions. We didn't say, okay, you have one sound barrier wall up, we want another one. We didn't have a restriction that says, okay, your pile, DEP says it can be twenty feet, we want it at fifteen feet there. So, we have no additional restrictions on their permit. That's how it ended, that's how it is. So, there's, right now, there's nothing in place. DEP set the restrictions, DEP gave them permit and ours is just a junk dealer's license at this point.
Which is much different than junk dealer.
In my opinion, and this is only me speaking, I, I find it, yes, I, I believe it is a difference, but not here nor there. At this point, they have it.
It, as far as where we are here and why we are here now, when they originally came to the town, basically, the procedure is you want to put something in somewhere, you go into the zoning enforcement officer, the building commissioner, same person, and you ask him, is this a allowable use in that area? He made a determination at that time that under our current zoning bylaws, the industrial two area of junk scrap business is allowed. And it does say that in our town, in our zoning bylaws. So, that's the determination that he made. Therefore, by right, he was allowed to give them, to have them proceed to the board of selectmen for a permit. The permit they were asked for is a simply a secondhand merchandise permit. I mean, it's the same permit you would give for somebody that wanted to do an antique dealership, or something to that effect. It's not the, the permit that, that the question is, is what their business does and is it approved or allowed by our town bylaws in the area it is. He made the determination that it is. So, that's why we are where we are. The current board, I wasn't on that board, so I can only speak like you can. I watched them, I also watched them the, the video and I read the minutes. There was no restriction put on by the board. There was no restriction put on by the board, they're pretty much mirroring what DEP said, and DEP put the, the restrictions on. Now, what I'm proposing, and not necessarily today, but what I, I'd like to look at what, what Mr. Sullivan, Lieutenant Sullivan said. He has some valid points, and there's nothing here that's outrageous, it's pretty much like DEP said, you went through the DEP specs. The ten decibels, which spells out in DEP, is also on here, which I think that's pretty much you have to stand, state of that standard, unless DEP changes something. But currently, this is the standard, so I don't think that's, that's outrageous. His decimal, total decimal level of sixteen, it was actually kind of high, DEP set you at, was it thirty-seven plus ten, forty-seven? So, you know, those standards are already in DEP, I think we should just mirror those standards. So, it really, the only thing he has a question about is time of day, your operation times, that's something you guys wanna get some thought to, and, you know. If that's what calms the, the, the area, maybe, maybe that's something you wanna work on, or, you know, come up with some kind of understanding. And lastly, pile heights, which, the pile heights, and that's something you're gonna have to look at, you know, safety wise, how high can you stack stuff before there's a cave, you know. Chance of collapse, we don't want, you know, loaders collapsing and not, the pitch of the piles, all that kind of stuff. I don't have a real heavy construction background, but I know there is certain heights to pitch levels that have to be maintained, so. As a loader goes into a pile, it doesn't collapse in on the loader, so that people walking by the pile, stuff's not falling down the pile and injuring people on, on, on the ground. So, those are the, just the, I, I don't think there's anything too outrageous what, what Lieutenant Sullivan was asking for, so, you know, just give some food to thought, and maybe we can. Work something out and make all the neighbors happy and keep everybody on the same page, okay?
Absolutely, no, no, we'd be happy to work with anybody as best that we can, to make the neighbors as comfortable as they can be. As I told you the night at the open house, we, we wanna coexist in the neighborhood, and we wanna be a good neighbor. We are running a business, and, and that, that same spirit of, of compromise, I, I hope comes from the neighborhood as well. I mean, like, right now, you know, I mean, there's been nothing there for many, many, many years. So, you know, when I think about the sound and I go out there at six thirty in the morning, yeah, it's pretty quiet, no question about it, I hear the birds, and I, you know. But we know, even with the regulation in place, it's just not gonna be the same, there will be some difference. So, I, I, I asked the board, and I asked the neighbors that are here, to, to. Give that serious consideration, as well as we as the business, give the neighbors consideration, and, and there we go. I understand if you're gonna have, you know, if, if it's annoying and you can't sleep in the morning or whatever, you know, everything's open for discussion at this point. And I, I just wanna send a message to the board and the neighborhood, that we're willing to work through any, any issues that people may have. In a reasonable, in a reasonable fashion, and, and I, and I, and I use the board to be the subjective judge on how reasonable things are.
Thank you.
Okay.
Four more questions to, Ms. Chief.
Yes.
The license, is the license or the permit that was signed, and there was no guidelines, or when will we know, when will we know? If you can provide us the status on if we need to change things, add things, restrictions to that process? Could you explain that to us, how that process would work if we needed to change that?
I'll make a motion to run those restrictions by Jonathan, so he's hanging up a paper on the page.
Which, which restrictions?
The four that are listed, the DEP, even though it's by DEP anyway.
I think we should mirror DEP, I, I don't know if that's, at this, at this point, though, is it, do you think?
Well, if we can't go forward, if we can't put restrictions on it now, then we have to wait till December.
Just an opinion?
Yes, I mean, I, I don't know if we can or can't.
Well, I mean, what are we asking, to find out if we can put?
Can, can we put restrictions on the license at this point, yes.
Because we, I mean, the thing that I'm concerned, it's exactly what I read here, and I read it to you, and I probably should read it again. So, Mr. Barbado says he thinks this is a good business option for this stuff, that's basically. So, I'm assuming now this gentleman is qualified, he's the one who signed it, and he said, this is how this company's gonna come in. Or qualified to come in based on this law that we have for scrap yard dealers now.
Scrap metal facilities.
Right, exactly, this facility that he's talking about by law, is kind of a basic facility, we talking about a multimillion dollar operation here.
It's not laid out in our bylaws unfortunately, the difference, it doesn't have a number value.
Exactly, exactly, it doesn't, but.
So, if it's a scrap metal facility in industrial two zone, it's allowable by, by our current bylaws, which should, can be changed. And we can go to town meeting and, and request change.
Exactly.
Through the town vote.
Right, exactly, but as you can see, as part of this project, the impact of one guy, little guy doing business here in town versus. This machine, this big machine going on in the background, the impact of environment, neighborhoods. Around the area is much bigger, right, you see that, so, my question is, should we review this process?
Well, that, that's.
Or, or should we review the signature signs or, or, there's something?
Okay, well, we got two, two things, yeah, we got two things on the floor.
That's not on.
Yeah, that's not under us, all right, so, can I just, can we just go back to the motion, and then we can address him and his concerns? So, the motion was just to ask Jonathan for an opinion.
Town council.
Town council of whether we can put a restriction on the license at this point, at this point.
Or if, or if we have to wait till it's renewed.
Right.
That's all we're asking.
Yes, that's it.
Motion made, seconded, right?
I seconded.
What's man say, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, to address your concern, one man did not make this decision, one man looked at the bylaws. That were in place for a scrap metal facility, and he said that this company fits the bill for the industrial area. The board of selectmen made the decision to issue the license. We knew that DEP had to give them the big permit to allow them to operate, it's governed by the state, okay? Look, businesses, when they come into a town, they have to realize that you have people that may not like them. That they may disturb, so they have to have that in their mind to try to keep everybody happy. But you can't keep every business out of town, even if you don't like the business, if the town bylaws allow it, you know, so, I mean.
So, you would have to look at the zoning, zoning chart and look at, you know, where permits fall within that zoning chart. Certainly, this is a learning for us, because yes, this, this was, you're taking a junk handles license, which is semi-small, and giving it to. A multimillion dollar business, and somewhere in the middle is, it should, there should be a crossover to, from one level. Level one junk handles license to a level two junk handles license, I get what you're saying, but that's not this, this, that would fall into the by, a bylaw change, and you would, you know.
I'm working about criteria.
Yes, I understand, I know, so you're looking like a level, level.
Thank you for elaborating what I'm saying, the other stuff is just noise for me.
And you can, you can pick up, right at the town hall, you can pick up a copy of our town bylaws, zoning bylaws. It lays out what's allowed in what areas, what's by special permit only, what's just by right, all those type of things, and it's easy.
And it is, people, you know, my, my concern with this is, people take advantage of the system, and I, I want to make sure. From my perspective, this is my view as one citizen of the town, they, they take advantage of the system, and people know, and. And some of these things slide through.
I believe the planning board is working on, come up with definitions to clarify different, not necessarily, and it won't apply to what's already been issued.
Absolutely.
It'll be going forward, but I believe the planning board's working on different definitions of, of facilities and that kind of stuff.
To make those gray areas more black and white.
Correct. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is that all we have?
I wanna go home and.
So, she thinks we're zing. I'll make a motion.
Second.